This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call the board of the Monterey South Board a few minutes late at 12:04 PM today, March 1st. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And our first item of business is meeting with Unibank representative David. Thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
I have some questions for you, but I didn't know if you want, do you want to present on the TANAMAX on the library loans? Or do you want, or the one year notes?
I can just mention that the town has a little over a million dollars in notes coming due on November 2nd. And I think you're deliberating on what you want to do when those notes mature in November. The notes are for the library project, which has been temporarily financed over a number of years. And some departmental equipment for a truck. And I did meet with the town treasurer, Sarah Hunter, and she had some thoughts about sizing the principal pay downs that the town would be making in November, which is in fiscal year 2024. I think that right now, I think the thought had been, as things stand, $100,000 for the library and $50,000 for the truck. But she was thinking that there's some debt roll off for, that could be applied to the library. That could actually result in a, an appropriation of $250,000 to the library. And then another, there's, there are money, additional monies available that would allow a, that would allow a pay down or appropriation of 100,000 for the, for the truck. So, and I think the thought was either to do a permanent issue when these notes mature, or to renew the notes for one more year and do a, a permanent financing in, in November of 24. So that's, those are sort of two of the options that I think that Sarah and I were looking at. So, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions you or the other board members might have.
Yeah, so last year we paid 104,000 roughly toward the library note, of which I think 100,000 was principal.
Actually, what I have is it was 125,000 that was paid. Wait a minute. Yeah, that was last year was 125,000.
Oh, yes, we had a, we had a donation. The town allocated 104. And then there was a private nonprofit donation towards, as well.
Right.
What is the minimum payment on the library this year? That's one question. And the other one is, you're talking about debt roll off where we pay 250,000 toward the library? What? I don't understand that. What?
Well, I think that what Sarah came up with is that the, there are, there is existing debt that is, where the last payment is this fiscal year. And it would, if you use that capacity to, if you use that towards the library, that could increase the, the pay down by $150,000. At least that would be something you could consider.
I think, are you talk, are you saying because we had the fire truck loan and the transfer station that totaled around $150,000 last year? And we don't need to pay them this year?
Yeah, that's the, the idea is I believe that those are debt excluded, that the, that the debt service is debt excluded. So that rolls off and you could, if you choose to do so, this is not, there's not a requirement here. If you chose, chose to do so, the, or if the town chooses to do so, there, the town could apply another $150,000 to, to the library pay down.
And that would keep our debt service payments consistent year over year?
Um, well, I think that that's, I guess we could model it and see what, you know, what the best result would be. If that's, if you want to see kind of what the result is, and I think it would depend a little bit also on whether you do a five-year, a permanent note issue this fall or next fall. So that would be, we'd want to, and maybe what we can do is model that for you and show you what that does to the payments.
Is he referring to the thing we just?
No, 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 no. I'm pretty, I'm fairly certain that's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, what, what you're saying is that we had the, a fire, we were paying down a fire truck and the, and the construction of the transfer station. Last year about $100,000 for the fire truck and 50,000 for the transfer station, and they were debt excluded. And we're not paying this year.
Right. You could, you could increase the payment on the library, which is also debt excluded. And have, you know, that would be, if you chose to use the levy capacity in that manner, you could increase the pay down. And this is something that Sarah was thinking you might want to consider doing.
Yeah. And I mean, what, I guess if you could provide us with models and recommendations for what makes sense in the long, in the long term. It's hard to make a judgment, I guess, without knowing what's the, what's the benefit of raising $250,000 towards the library? Other than obviously it's more paid down.
And it probably means you pay less interest over time. What are the rates like now? And obviously there's no way you can, I'm not asking you to accurately prognosticate, but the generally the financial community has a sense of where things are going.
Right.
Are we likely, what is the likelihood we will be better served by another one year? And prolonging the time till doing the bigger, longer one? Or taking the rates now because rates will be worse next year? Like, give us some idea of where the financial community stands on that situation.
Well, I, I think, I don't know how the financial community stands for Monterey, but I think that part of what I would like to do is leave your options open as much as possible. Although if you do a permanent financing in the fall, we might want to be talking about budgeting for an interest payment, in an additional interest payment in fiscal year 24. But yeah, I mean, the short, rates for these types of borrowings have gone up considerably. And I would expect that you might, even for a five-year permanent state house loan note, you might be looking at a 5% rate on this. And the short term.
Right, like in November? Five, you're saying this November or November of next year?
I think it would, I think it's possible that, I mean, it may be, rates may come down. I'm saying right now, we're looking at 5%. Possible that rates may come down between now and November. In fact, I think that would be a reasonable guess that rates may come down over the calendar year. But I, I can't say, I don't think that you should budget on that basis, although I think that you can maybe leave yourself room to have the flexibility to go either way. And what it sounds like I ought to do, given your questions, is give you models of what this looks like. If you do a permanent issue fall of 23 versus a, an issue in fall of 24. And I'm happy to provide that to you through the treasurer. And also model that additional, I guess there was an amount of free cash that was available as of June 30th, that I guess the thought had been to perhaps apply that to the fire truck. Wasn't applied last year, but it would be available this year if the, if the town, if the town meeting so voted. So I could model what that looks like as well.
One other question. If we go with a one-year note, like we've been doing, there, I believe there's a minimum payment?
Yes.
Do we know what the truck and library?
Library, I believe, is, let me just.
We found them together last.
I think it's.
But not one note, which.
It might have been sold as one note, but they're still.
Right, but they were, I think we got a better rate by combining them. That's because it makes it more.
I'm just confirming what I think that is. Yeah, it's about 70, a little less than $71,000 would be the absolute minimum statutory pay down on the library. The town has been making payments that are far larger than that in recent years, but that would be the 70, $70,950 would be the minimum. And.
The treasurer told me it was 135 with the interest.
It could be. I think she may have been including, she may have been including that $50,000 in free cash in that figure. The free cash that.
No, don't, don't include anything. Just tell us what the actual payments do are in principal plus interest. There's no free cash.
So if it were, if it were, if you did the 70,950. Do you want to know just for the library?
We want to know what the payment is for each principal and interest, the library and then the truck.
Okay, so let me just see if there's any payment due on the. So the truck was issued new money in March of '22, so there's no principal payment due or required. Any principal that you do pay would be at the town's option. For a library, you have the 70,950. And the interest. $35,000 on the library.
On the interest.
Interest.
And on the truck with the interest?
Okay, the truck interest, let me just see. Let's call it $6,815.
She told us that one was 56,815. So she, she's giving us some kind of number of cash that we don't have there.
Well, the six, so it sounds like she gave you $50,000 in principal and the 6815 in interest. That's what that sounds like that was.
But you're saying that all we owe the bank is 6,815?
That's right. Under the, under state law, the, the interest that's payable is 6815.
So we wouldn't owe you anything on the principal?
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not, we're the financial advisor. You owe the money to Adams Community Bank. They're the note holder.
Okay, so we wouldn't owe Adams.
We're your fiduciary. We're not, you know, we're not your lender.
We don't owe Adams Community Bank 50,000 in principal.
Not unless you can, it's at the town's option to make that payment, to reduce the principal. That's not a, that's not statutorily required. The 70,950 on the library, that is a statutory requirement. And then the 35,000 is what's required in terms of the interest. And if she gave you, if Sarah gave you 135, it sounds like she was giving you an amount above and beyond, an amount of a principal payment above and beyond the statutory minimum.
One other factor to throw in to our considerations. Last May, the town voted on and approved $160,000 towards a, towards another truck. But that is not, I mean, we, we don't have the truck yet. But when we're, when you're modeling it, if it makes sense to do so, and we could estimate when we're going to receive that, and that should be lumped in. I just, I don't know if you're aware of that authorization.
Wasn't aware of that. I'm happy to include that. What kind of truck is it?
It's similar to an F-550.
Okay, so.
It was voted on, actually, the article said F-550, and we went back to town meeting to change it to make it any generic truck similar to an F-550.
Because the F-550 isn't developable.
Right, so, but you probably. When do you think that the, it will be delivered or deliverable?
Probably not for another six or eight months.
It's a fall of, so it might be about the time that these notes come due. Okay.
And I mean, the other thing is, if there's any recommendations, we're considering borrowing for another truck this year. And if there are thoughts on, if that's advisable, or if we should, that, I mean, just to.
I think that that's, we could, you know, what I might do is give you more information. If you tell me how much to assume on the other additional truck. And on, on both of these vehicles, we probably want to make assumptions. It's actually up to you, the three of you, what the useful life is of the vehicle. So, and that determines how long you can, that the town can borrow for. It's the select board that makes that determination. So if you say that the useful life of this truck is 10 years, you can borrow then up to 10 years. So that would affect how, if you say it's five years, that would also affect how we would project this. So if you give me, if you give me a figure and may, and make an assumption about when you'd need the money, I would, I can definitely roll that into the analysis that I'll be preparing.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you have a figure at this point, or do you want to defer that?
The one that's been around is 375,000, but actually we're, I'm fairly certain that truck is not even available. And we're looking at maybe doing two vehicles instead of one. So we really don't have a good figure for you, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, I can definitely do the library, the existing borrowing for equipment, and then this $160,000 truck. And it sounds like you probably wouldn't want to, I mean, is 10 years? Do you think you would, is this something that you think would have a useful life of 10 years? Or is it shorter than that? It might be shorter than that.
The 550, the 160,000 dollar 550? Yeah, I mean, I think on our capital plan, it's put in for five or six.
Okay, so I'll assume, we'll assume a six year useful life. And I can model that. I'll model the library and then the other departmental equipment, the other truck. So, do you want us, and I guess I'm not clear. Do you want to see just the minimum statutory pay downs on these? Or, you know, as Sarah recommended, she had these additional amounts. I can, maybe I show you both ways.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as you're confident in the numbers you gave us on minimum pay downs, we have, we're aware of that as of now. But I don't know, at least from my point of view, I could use a good recommendation from someone who knows more about these things.
So the tricky business, the tricky business that we're facing is that the, the free cash numbers that Sarah was using aren't there. We're, we're probably committed to using some of that money for a bunch of other things that the town also needs. These are not our only, these, the library and trucks are not our only concerns. And for a variety of reasons, it's going to be a big jump probably in, to the taxpayers because we used excess free cash from an error in a previous year to lower the levy last year. So it's going to feel like a bigger jump than it actually is, even though our budget is actually not going up by much. And you could argue it's actually going down a bit. So we're, we're concerned about adding on big numbers, even though we see the value of reducing the debt in years going forward. I think that's the hesitation that you're hearing. Did I summarize that accurately?
Yeah, I mean, I, I could just, like I said, it'd be good to have a recommendation as to what's advisable in the long term.
You know, I think that she, your, your member, I'm sorry, I don't have your name, but you, I think you summarized very nicely. I'm sorry?
Susan.
Susan summarized very nicely, what, summarized very nicely the policy choice that you have and that you'll be presenting to town meeting. I mean, if you have, you know, you, Sarah was talking about $150,000 in levy capacity. But if you're saying that you want to use that to offset the effect of this, you know, issue with the $50,000, and you're not sure you have the $50,000 in free cash to apply to the existing equipment, that's, you know, that's something that, you know, what I can do is I can tell you what this all looks like. But as, in some ways, what you're talking about is policy. And I can tell you what I think, but I don't advise you on policy. I think it's more.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking you to. I'm just telling you when you, when you're saying you could put all these, this money forward. Sarah's prognostications of the available free cash are not likely to, to be available. That doesn't mean we wouldn't necessarily recommend to town that we should levy that additional money to prevent excessive debt in future years. But I, it just, it's a harder ask. So we, I think are, would probably be a little more conservative in how much we proactively pay down. That, that's all I was expressing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I can show you kind of the Sarah model, and then I can show it, show you at the minimum required payments, what this looks like in fall of '23. And then you can make a determination how you want to proceed. And, and I would throw, I would include the $160,000 F-550 or similar truck, assuming that that's, you'll be borrowing for that at about the time that these notes mature. Through you, Mr. Chair, is this seem like I'm on the right track?
Yeah, thank you. The, and I guess, so there's the model of the minimum payment, and then there's the model of doing one-year notes again with a, with a more significant principal payment. And then there's also the model of, of blocking in something like five years this fall.
Right, so I would. It seems to me you've got four models here. You got the minimum principal payments, and then the larger principal payments. And then, because either way, and then either way, you could be looking at a one-year note or a five-year permanent note this fall. With the one-year note, you would do five years in November of '24. And I can model it all four ways, if you'd like.
That would be great, please.
Yes, thank you.
How soon do you need this?
Sorry.
How, how, how?
Can you do it?
How long is it? Does it take? I mean.
Tell me you need it, let me ask you, when do you next meet?
A week from today, more or less.
I can try to have this, by, I will try to have this to you by Tuesday. I'll have it to Sarah by Tuesday.
If you can, that'd be great.
I just need, I just need to put it in my list and I can proceed from there.
Well, if it takes, if it takes two weeks, that's fine too.
I'll try to do, I'll try to do it on this schedule, Tuesday, the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Chair, do you have any other questions? Do you or the other members have any other questions?
I think we're all set on our end. Thanks for, thanks for helping us to understand. Do you need anything more official on that $160,000 for the 550 or similar truck?
As long as you agree that you're basically, the option, the two options there are going to be that you either will issue one-year notes for that in the fall with a five-year permanent financing in '24, or you're going to do a five-year financing in the fall of '24. I mean, '23, so that's, that's what I would assume on this, if you are in agreement.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you, and I will get to work.
Yeah.
All right, you too. Take care now. Bye-bye now.
Is the truck over? Yes. Do we, what is the use, what do we consider, or have we considered the useful life, life of one of those F-550s? Everything I could find about it just talks about mileage, but I have no idea how.
I think it's just about six years, or five or six years. I think that's what, on our capital plan, it's what, five or six years? I mean, and part of the problem is they're just, they get heat on as products, and it's all, it's all things, so.
I think the warranty only lasts five years because it's apparently when rust starts showing up. But it's, everything I find talked about 200,000 to 300,000 miles, depending on how it's made.
200,000 to 300,000.
Miles, but that it, there was a whole thing about engine hours and the way it's used, right? So I have no idea how that would affect. These are all familiar themes.
Why do they idle all the time?
I mean.
Is there a reason why they don't just turn the damn thing off if they're sitting on the side of the road doing radar?
You mean the police car?
Yeah.
I was talking about the F-550. I would imagine like because they're waiting to dump the load or like, or instance, you're not driving it. It's a dump truck, right? You might be idling while you're dumping. The engine is still running.
I'm talking police crews.
The thing that I've heard about police crews, we have to ask Brian, but what I've heard is that to keep all the electronics running, their laptops and radios, they keep the, keep the engine running to power all that. And if they shut it down, it shuts down all their electronics and it's not, that's, that's my understanding. Yeah.
And I imagine that that's one big advantage, I think, of the hybrid vehicles because it will reduce engine wear and tear by cycling the engine on and off automatically. Because it'll be running partially off the battery.
So it sounds like we have some decisions to make.
So just something new. I'm just going to put in the figures that he gave, the low ones, $50,000.
Well, yeah.
And then you guys can decide how much you want to put. It's about one or. So I'm putting 105, 950 in the library and 6,815 in the insurance.
Can you add to the debt service, I guess? Well, maybe we won't, but 550, it sounds like maybe we combine those all together. However, if we combine them, they probably, they lose their own individual lines and it becomes consolidated debt service, right?
No, you could, you said the last time he was here, that you can still do a, like a jumbo loan and separate out what each one is costing.
Yeah, even though it doesn't matter.
Where is it currently on her for last year's budget? The other tab, the other tab. Sophia's not coming in. She doesn't have anything to report as a group. She needs to speak individually.
Okay. That's that. And, and anyways, so once we get, well, we're going to have four options.
Right.
Well, more than that, but four.
And, and the whole question of whether we want to pay, you know, put additional principal down. It's always, it's always on the table because it reduces the interest you pay ultimately. But it means you got to have the money to pay down the principal. So there's always that trade off. It's always less money in the long run, but more money now. Like, that's what, that's all about, right? And I think if you're going to add the vehicles this year, you might be able to get him to add those in as well. That is one thing. You can add the police cruiser or the truck and the fire department vehicle if you're.
Yeah, so the, the one thing, I mean, the cruiser, I think the cruisers small could be paid for with free cash. I don't, like adding all these little, I wish we had paid for the 550 last year with the plenty of free cash that we had. Now it's going to end up.
Something more.
But it is. But, and other things, I don't know enough of these things to really say, that's why I'm hoping that they can give us some recommendations.
Is it possible to fire him off? One more question to include there was, which is, loan rates are often influenced by the amount of the loan. So, and I don't want to make our life more complicated, but sometimes putting those numbers together results in a better rate overall. Like, if you can drop a whole percentage point because you added another item to that, right, that we were going to buy anyway, that would make a difference. Whether that's the case or not, I don't know, but it would be worth asking. I'm not a big fan of debt, right, don't get me wrong, but if I'm going to have the debt, I'd rather get the best possible rate for that debt that I can.
Or, yeah, are you able to, Melissa feels with him?
Yes.
And, and say, we're considering buying, I mean, he knows about the fire vehicle, which it sounds like it's going to probably be two vehicles anyway, and that we have other smaller vehicles in the $100,000 and less range, and how would those affect?
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I think that the small vehicles were better off if, if we had by the amount of free cash. I'd rather see us do that. I just want to know what options we have before we make the choice, because if it's not going to make a difference, then we, then it's not even about consideration. And I would say anything less than a whole percentage point, I don't think it's worth ang, angsty over it. Like, if you can drop it a percentage point, that's where money, less than that, I don't know how much it's going to make a difference. For the aggro.
We'll wait to hear back from the bank, who's, not our bank, but our advisor.
Right.
Unreasonable noise by law Donna has, just waiting to hear back on that.
Okay, so we have not, no, no news, okay.
She has it in her possession, and she's going to look at it. Private Ways.
Yep. So, I, I think I did send you, did I, I just drafted a quick letter, and I, I don't know, did I, I believe I sent it to you, let me just check. Okay? Second try, maybe.
Second try.
That was the minutes. So I-
Both of the minutes are not the letter.
Yeah, the, the minutes are not that here, let me just send you those so you can see it. I drafted a letter that we could send to people who are on private ways, and believe me, it's just a draft, I just wanted us to have a starting place, to basically say, people, you need to sell together and fix your road, so the town isn't going to have to make you with a stick. Here, let me just, I don't, I don't know if you'll like it, it might be terrible, it might need to be completely redone, I'm sure you'll have thoughts.
Is it, I mean, all private roads, or just private roads that have problems? Because I think, I think the biggest, there's been year-round residents on a lot of the private roads for years now.
You could shoot, shoot to send it to, right, some of them do a great job.
Well, there's a problem on the east side of Lake Garfield, where basically they're building more year-round houses, and there, that is not a road.
Right.
Pathway.
Well, plus there's some problems over by Lake Ull, aren't there?
That's, I think, the worst one in town. I mean, part, the problem was, it was always just people come up in the summer, but now they want to come up and do it.
Right. But that's not always the problem, sometimes the problem, in some cases, the problem is that there's no agreement among the people that the road is serving as to whose responsibility it is to maintain the road or keep the road in decent condition or what have you, and so it doesn't get maintained, because if you've got eight people, and I, if you've got eight people living on a road, and they're not willing to work together, because five of them are like, we don't want to pay for anything, somebody else's problem. And three of them are like, we'd really like our road to be better, but we're not going to pay for the, to fix it for everybody else when they're not chipping in, you have a problem. And the problem is that then, when you have a weather event, it washes out onto a public way, right? So, I, you know, I think that we can, we, there's no harm in asking them to do the right thing as well as, right, trying to. So I just drafted something for us at a place to start doing, pardon? I did, I just did. And it says that it's sent.
I got it.
Meanwhile, Hopkinpin, I, I don't really like the other one, what is it, Hangout?
Yeah, or- Holland?
Holland, yeah.
I didn't really like the either one.
No, me neither.
I don't really think that they're going to help us.
Okay, it's good to hear that, because that's kind of how I felt.
It's, we'd have to go through a lot of hoops, and-
I mean, Hopkinpin's closer, but basically, so what hap, did, do you have the, have a chance to read through the ones that got, that Justin forwarded us that got suggested?
Nah, that's what today though.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the idea of if we fix the road, we're going to charge you for it through an assessment, but the process outline-
Oh, yeah, betterment assessment, I think that's a nightmare.
Is it?
I, well, I just think so. I mean, from my understanding, because we've talked about doing a betterment assessment on the lakes, instead of doing a tax district, and we don't have, we have one tax rate in Monterey.
Right.
And it's just clean enough. And betterments, I thought, were usually for things like sidewalks or septic, or sewer systems, where your neighborhood is getting new sidewalks, and so just your neighborhood's going to pay for it. But it comp, it seems to complicate, complicate things. And, and, because really, what we're talking about here is usually, and it is a pain, and it's not right that private roads wash out on our public roads, but it's usually a few hours with an excavator, it seems like, or at least in the one instance that I can recall.
For them to fix it, or for the town to fix it?
For the town. Well, to really fix it, I mean, they need drainage, all kinds of other work, but for us to get it-
Off our way.
Yeah, and sort of do a bylaw, and then all these hurdles, which it, it's things to have to go through, but at the end of the day, it seems like we, it might just make more sense to just deal with them as they come up, send an invoice that we know isn't legally enforceable.
And when we, and when we, when they don't pay it, we just-
Well, we haven't had problems, I mean, I mean, the time that we had problems, we applied the littlest bit of pressure, and they went and, yeah, it, it cost our highway department a few hours. I think Jim's invoice reflected about a few hours, which is not good, but-
Did West Road actually?
They went and fixed it within a week or two, yeah, after, after, and we never, Jim had drafted an invoice, but it never got sent.
Right, that part I knew that hadn't been sent, but I wasn't sure what the outcome on the road was. And, but I think the issue raised about access for emergency services is also for that, so I addressed that in the letter. See what you, I think, to me, at least, saying to people that are on private ways, hey, we know some of you are doing a great job, but here's why it's important to keep doing a great job or to step up your game if you're not doing a great job. I, you know, maybe they're still not going to, but at least we're putting on, on notice that we know they're doing a poor job. So, and, and I don't, I don't-
Well, maybe we could consult with Sean and Brian as well, and ask them what, what private ways in particular do they see as problematic for access? And just focus on those neighborhoods.
And I, I know that, do you remember the name of the road that Jim, I was going backwards though?
Dow.
Dow?
Near Scott, right? It's near Scott.
Yes, it was Scott Road.
Oh, down by, down at Silv- Ashlane, Worthline, Scott.
And it's like, it's like Dow down.
Well, Dow is on, by Broderick, on the east side of Lake Garfield.
I think it was that one, because I think it was off Broderick.
Yeah, and that's the huge hill, that's the huge hill, which doesn't get maintained in the winter, and somehow people are coming through Elephant Rock, which is fine if like one person lives down there and they don't, and they just mind their own business, but if all of a sudden there's going to be multiple people down here.
And I, I think the whole thing is exacerbated because GPS will send you anywhere. There's a lot of people that are renting houses and don't know the area, and they're using the GPS, they've got, they don't have road sense for rural areas, they're traveling on roads, they, well, the road is open, so it must be okay. And then they get into trouble, and then we're, you know, we could just say, well, it's not a town road, you're stuck. But then, but even the tow guy couldn't get to it. So then the tow guy is talking to Jim, saying, hey, can you help me out? So then we're, well, and what if we say no, then what does that mean for that person that went down the road? Like, too bad, no one's going to help you, we're not even, you can't even get a tow truck? Where, would we just leaving their car maroon there indefinitely?
Until they figure out how to get their ass out of a jam. I got in there. It's not our responsibility to save the world.
I forgot what road, but I heard one time of someone getting stuck and leaving their car there for the winter.
In Monterey?
Yeah.
I love it.
I will see how you can, how you can take that responsibility 1% of, so how it works.
I mean, we could ask people that aren't maintaining the road to put a gate at the top and the bottom, so if the road isn't open during the winter.
It's not our responsibility for that either. I think you can let them do what they do. Somebody's willy-nilly down a highway they've never been, that's at your own risk. I mean, it's, it's like slipping on the ice on a dark hill, you got sand on top of the surface of the lake. Well, I mean, at some point, people have to be responsible, and if they're not going to be, that puts a big smile on my face, because it just goes to show where we have become as a society. I make a mistake, and also maybe somebody will bail my ass out. Wrong, I make a mistake, I learn from it, I bail myself out.
So, it seems like, though, if that's the approach we want to take, and I'm not saying we don't-
It's the approach I would take.
Right, I, I think then we need to actually make clear to, at least, well, okay, I see one other problem. If a person, let's say that car hadn't just gotten stuck, but someone was injured.
Yep.
Are you saying that emergency services personnel are going to say, sorry, we're not coming because the road isn't maintained?
Possibly.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, sure it is, how do they really get there?
Well, that is what Donna said that we can do, is we can send a letter, and we can say, we can talk to Sean and Brian, and ask them what roads they can't access in the winter or at any time, and then send a letter to those people saying, we cannot send emergency services to you in the event of emergency because your road is not maintained well enough.
Which is pretty much what I looked to in the letter that I wrote. So I'm not saying I'm unwilling to do it, I'm just wondering what's going to happen in the event of that call, whether EMS is going to actually say, yeah, we're not going up there, we're just going to let the person die because they hit the tree, or whatever, or, I mean, because if you're in the middle of a wilderness area, there aren't roads and rescue people still coming to help you.
Who helps you get off a monument?
I've never been stuck, so you don't know.
You know how much they charge an hour? Big bucks.
So you actually get charged at your point?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes people get stuck in Bear Town, and they'll get carried out. So probably something's going to happen, but it's going to be delayed, because those trucks can't pull in, so it's either going to be people pulling out, or the ATVs from surrounding towns, or something like that.
Yes, snowmobiles, helicopter, if you could get somebody like that in, but it's-
Because our fire department?
They have a helicopter?
No, do we ever charge if we extra pay for that?
Um, I don't think so.
That, well, all I'm saying is, my suspicion is, if it happened within Monterey Town borders, a lot of the times, we'd end up paying for it because we support the fire company, and the fire company or the EMS that's, that's turning out to that. So, like, that's like saying, well, you're responsible for it yourself, even, and pretending like you're not actually paying for the service that is turning out to do it, and you're making their lives harder, because they can't get in there, but they're going to go in anyway.
Not necessarily, if you can't get somewhere, you can't get there, right? You pull up with that $800,000 fire truck, and you can't get in, into the road.
So I-
Now you're going to have to either walk in.
But that's what I think they're going to-
I have an idea, why don't, if, if it's already, or if this is a good way forward, I will talk to Sean and Brian, and ask them what roads are inaccessible to emergency vehicles, and then we can go from there.
Can, can you add one question onto that list? I want a realistic assessment of what both of them would do in the event of, what if the person that got stuck on, not Dow, what was it? Dow Road, hadn't just gotten stuck, what if their car had hit a tree and the person was injured? What would the police and what would the fire department have actually done? Would they have refused service, or would they have gone in anyway? And, because that's a realistic assessment of what would actually happen if it-
True, I mean, you know, there's not one EMS who's ever volunteered that would consciously walk away.
I, that's my point.
It's in your blood.
Yes.
You're EMS, you don't care, you're second, they're number one.
And you're going to go, you're going to go, it means you walk in for the stuff, you're going to go.
Well, that's what we're saying, if you can't get in on a vehicle, you get out, get your jump kit, and you head towards the injured people. You do what you can do, but you can't do any more than what you can do.
I agree.
So, at some, oh, I, I know, so you're going to have to strap the guy in your back and hope that he doesn't succumb to whatever injuries he has.
Or have a sled, or whatever, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying-
I think that's what they would say.
I want to look out for our EMS responders too, right? So I'm not just looking out for the person that got injured, because I also care about the people that are, that are emergency responders. And if, if are not going after these malfeasance, result in them getting hurt, I don't, I'm not okay with that either.
You don't want anybody ever be injured.
Exactly.
Right, so we're all on the same page, it's just a matter of who do you slap? You know?
I'm probably willing to charge the idiot who went down the road.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're doing what we can to prevent as much of those issues as possible.
But we also need the recourse, so that what we do-
Yes.
Send somebody a bill for hypothetically $11,000, that, that's got teeth, there, that's, you're on the hook.
Yeah, as long as you can get her to pay.
Even though you were in our town borders, doesn't mean that we patrol every square inch of our town and we're going to protect you from any little incident that happens. There's, there's just the role of responsibility.
Don't blame the GPS company, it's not our fault you used it. Road not maintained during the winter.
Just put aside at the borders, turn around.
All right.
Okay, all they say, turn around, don't travel, it's kind of safe there.
Sneaker waves.
So that's how we'll move, I'll, I'll contact the emergency people and see what they, what their answer to those questions are. And for now, unless someone else wants to pursue the bylaw, I, I'm not going to.
You just think it's more effort than a court?
Yeah, I won't myself, but if someone else wants to.
The bylaw for what?
For the roads, for private roads.
Because the low, the low effort one doesn't, isn't going to work, and the high effort one is too complicated?
Yep, it's like-
Does that pretty much sum it up?
All this stuff about what the SLIC board has to do, and the planning board, and the director of operations, and, and you go through this whole process, and, and I, I just don't think it's, it's worth it for our problems, which you, which so far have resolved themselves.
Yeah, I think once again, try to keep a policy as minimum as possible. It helps, our policy is that if you get stuck on your own private road.
So there's just-
I, it's not the people that are on their own private road that's worried, it's the people who-
If you're on a private road, you're stuck or left.
Fair enough. Get yourself out.
Yeah, you're responsible.
Short-term rental tax, I just-
That's a great idea.
I just put it, put together pretty much what Eggerman had, I'll send it to Donna, unless there's any other changes to it.
Let's do it.
You'll be ready to go for annual coming in?
I kept reading XX's 20s, but it's, never mind.
No, I just-
No, I know, it's just a holder, I get that, but initially, I didn't, it's funny. I figured it out.
I'm assuming Eggerman did it, right, but we'll just run by Donna, and you said-
Looks like exactly the wording from the Eggerman bylaw that's written in place, you know?
Copy and paste is a wonderful thing.
And, and basically, it's exactly the wording that's in the law, so it's, it wasn't like-
I, I don't think there's going to be that much.
No, it, it's pretty simple.
And then there will be revenue, so I'm good. Fiscal year 24 budget.
Okay, holiday pay, since this is hard timers, I know you're going to recuse yourself. It's fine. Go for it, I just have to finish, Sophia sent me a comment on this, so. There we go. There we go. So I had drafted something and run it by Sophia, she didn't like the language for some excellent reasons.
Where is this?
Let me, I'm gonna forward you who.
I, I'm pretty certain I read it. Because it was last.
So.
It was early this week I read it, I'm quite certain.
Right, but today she just sent, uh, today she sent a suggested change. So that it would read, all full-time and part-time employees, based on the definition of full and part-time employee in the handbook. Shall receive their regularly, uh, regular hourly rate. For the number of hours equal to their scheduled workday for the following holidays, list out holidays. Employees who are scheduled to work on holiday and do not work as scheduled shall not receive holiday pay. I don't get the last part. So in other words, if you don't show, but you weren't supposed to, like if the, if the transfer station was open that day and you didn't show because it was a holiday. It's not your holiday, you're scheduled to work anyway, so you don't get. But if it's a holiday, it would be closed. If it's a holiday, we would be closed, so that kinda, but what if? Don't, doesn't those transfer stations sometimes stay open on some holidays?
It's the day after.
It's the day after.
Excuse me.
If it's, if it's a holiday, we're all supposed to be.
I think it's just, right, I think it just covers you. Because sometimes there are people who aren't supposed to work on holiday. But I don't think it, we don't have part-time employees that it would apply to, that what that would apply to, I guess.
Right, because the only people I can think of that that would apply to would be the police and fire.
Basically, it, right. But I think that's, it's, it's language to protect you in the case that you do. It just muddies it for me, and maybe, maybe I need to read it a couple more times.
Did you reread that without it?
Employees who are scheduled to work on holiday and do not work as scheduled shall not receive holiday pay. In other words, if for whatever reason you were supposed to work that day, even though it was a holiday, and you don't, you don't get paid. Like, fair. But we don't have anyone that fits the description as well, Melissa's saying.
Right, because it means, to me, you're saying you get the holiday off and you're gonna get paid, but if you were scheduled to work it, you don't show up. Like, to me, it's contradicting itself, right? Or I just, I, I think what it's. I think what it's saying is, if, if you are granted the holiday, you get paid for the holiday. If you're not granted the holiday and you're expected to work anyway, and you don't show up. Then you don't get it.
So maybe I should say, like, if your position requires you to be here on a holiday.
Right, but I think that was what scheduled work on a holiday to me. Because we don't schedule people who aren't. If the, if the lever is closed on a day because it's a holiday. The lever works, do not get scheduled to work that day.
Right, or they shouldn't, so at least.
Right. I mean, that was the.
That makes it better, but I, I just see myself having to explain that to people. Maybe at the same way as I do.
So, um, you want me to re, re, okay, first of all. Do we have to fix the wording before we vote on it? Or can we vote on it in principle and tweak the wording and vote on that separately?
I think you guys could vote on whether you're going to offer holiday pay to part-timers beginning July first.
Right. Do we wanna do that? Do we, we had an estimated cost, did you update that?
Let's see. Just mask it there.
Okay. According to Melissa's last estimate. The.
Pardon?
Six thousand something.
Four thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Maximal.
Could, it's probably gonna be a little more because I use the current hourly instead of what you guys are. So I'll call it five thousand or less, yeah.
Just multiply that by point zero three eight.
Right. So ten percent would be four hundred and twenty dollars. So, you know, less than five thousand.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to award holiday pay to our part-time employees. Finalize policy wording to be established at future dated. But money for said being included in the budget to begin July first, to begin July first. Twenty twenty four. Great, twenty twenty three.
Does that include the full-time police department?
Full-timers already get it.
Okay. Part-timers?
Just, this is for just part-time.
Part-time police officers.
But it would not be part-time police.
Correct, it excludes EMS.
It does. And we can exclude EMS without EMS looking at us like, why are we excluded? Why is it excluded?
Applies for sick time.
Excuse me?
I said it's same thing applies to the sick time.
They're excluded now? Because if it was all EMS, would that be any member of the fire company?
Could be. I, I think the way.
How, there are, so, but we, do we not have a volunteer fire company anymore?
Volunteer paid fire company.
So how does the word volunteer and pay?
Because they're still volunteering, they, they get a stipend.
Then, then it's not part of their. Yeah.
Also, this is why employees who are scheduled to work on a holiday matters. Because somebody like the part-time police officers. Are actively scheduled to work on that holiday because it's twenty-four seven covered. So we, we can't pay them to not work that day because the whole point of having them is to work that day. Right, like, it needs to be covered. That's why you have those exclusions.
Right, and they get holiday pay. I think maybe the clearer way to me is to say, like, you know. This policy applies to staff that have a regular recurring schedule. You know, set the schedule. So you know you work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, where you're not, as you know, firemen work when there's a. Right, police, the part-time police work when there is a shift open, you know, and filled.
Which is generally holidays.
Generally, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I would second that to include maybe that garbage change that Melissa had.
So how about what we vote on is to have the part-time employees paid for holiday in principle? And we will come back with better language?
Yes.
But let's include those numbers in the budget.
Yes.
Okay, so are you seconding that amended motion?
Yes.
All right, all of us in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And would you be okay with me adding it to the budget as a holiday part-time wages instead of adding this to each line item? You and I briefly talked about.
Sure, for one thing, that enables us to see how it's being used.
Yeah, it's also just a wide item that could be helped.
Right.
Clarified in just a few.
Rather than.
Seconds.
Going back and trying to redo everybody's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And do you wanna work with Sophia to try to get us better language?
Yeah.
We're gonna do it this morning. Yeah, I know, that's fine. As long as it gets into the budget and then we can finalize the language. If we, you know, if we don't finalize the language until break before July, I'm still okay with it. Since that's our language, as long as it gets into the budget, I'm happy. Okay.
Justin.
Justin. Were you lurking in the hallway?
Everything is so good.
All right. Um, also, while we're on the subject of budget review and part-time pay. I think we did get numbers back from. The library director to amend the library budget to. The part-time employee pay per sick leave. Excellent, okay.
Are you guys gonna talk about the police cruiser now since this will be twenty-four budgets technically now?
Yes, um, I mean, and any other items that are in fiscal year twenty-four budget. A, a budget? But we are gonna do budget probably today or tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I'll give you one later this afternoon. I did put some of the things in, but I haven't put everything. Do I? If you want to print the copy, I'll do it right now.
No, I just assume how that you call it.
So that budget revision three, four hours ago. Is that what we're gonna work off of?
I did not send it.
Oh, from this Cooper.
Oh, yeah. What did I say?
You said twenty twenty-four budget revision three, four hours ago. What are you doing up solo?
I'm trying to figure out what I'd say. Budget revision, I say, okay, nine thirty AM. Nine thirty does not strike me as early, Mr. Jensen.
And there's a lot of hand scribbling here.
I think that is just.
It's just the final.
That was just the, the update from the library. It wasn't the overall budget.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I see.
And he sent it to me, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had the same material.
Okay. Okay, what would that be, the paperwork we're gonna work off of?
I can print you one shot. Scott, you need one.
What I'm looking at is two twenty-two.
Two twenty-two, but I, I just, if you want me to email it to you right now, I can, I'm still gonna say two twenty-two, but I.
Yeah. I'm just most curious to see the special articles when we're paying them off the free cash, to see what kind of free cash is around or not. But the debt service we were always reaching appropriating for, so that won't affect.
Right, but I did change those numbers. Just coming to the budget.
You were in the two twenty-two one as well?
This is still not say two twenty-two.
Okay, is debt service in, it's just a line in the budget.
Yeah. Broken out by library.
Yeah. But that's an interesting idea about.
What?
Paying two hundred and fifty, I mean, because we dropped off of our loans last year. We, we did the final loan payment on two things, the transfer station and the fire truck.
Right. And then.
So if we kept our payments level, we would pay more on principal, but.
Pay down the principal, so we're paying less in the future.
Yep.
Still pay that hundred and fifty, but. For principal.
Right. There's a lot to be said for it. It, you know.
It is out of here.
Yeah. Especially when we know that next year brings other delights.
The only problem is the minimal change to our operating budget now.
Right.
Is in part due to the lowered debt service.
Yep. We had this one-year blip because last year's taxes were artificially low because we had the extra free cash. So it's gonna hit a little harder this year. But it's not that the budget actually went up substantially, it's that it was artificially lowered last year by half a million dollars. Four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, I followed it.
Police cruiser.
Yep. So to catch you up, Scott. Would you like to encapsulate the discussion? Or would you like me to do it?
On the police cruiser?
Yes.
Well, there are these, do we have a Hepsor set of these?
I read it.
Okay.
Oh, no, I have not seen that. I read what the finance committee and you guys talked about.
Those, these came from Brian yesterday that we were talking about.
I have not seen that.
Brian really wants to run the department with three cruisers rather than two.
Thought he made that quite clear back when he was being interviewed. Yes, he had been about that. He thought cameras, maybe that. Radio's another car, yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, he provided us a bunch of documentation to support that. And yesterday at the finance committee, how would you rate the various arguments presented and the.
Well, what was the arguments? I mean, to buy it or not?
What, no, I mean, the various opinions offered as to whether to do it or not. What was the upshot of the discussion?
Well, my, my. All I would say is. I think, I mean, I think the discussion was, well, my, my point of view is that. When I, when I spoke with Brian on Monday. He was actually less certain that we needed the cruiser this year, but certain that he wanted in, in the future to run, run three cruisers. And my point of view is, you know, I, we could disagree on that, but at the end of the day, he is the department head. He is saying this is how he wants to run the department and. That's not. And it is eight years old of a cruiser.
I also feel like we're gonna, getting another hybrid vehicle is gonna reduce our gas bill, but also reduce wear and tear, especially at idle. Um, and do so vehicle, maybe better suited, there's a little more forward thinking, especially since it's eight years old.
What does Brian drive today? Is he driving that?
The hybrid cruiser.
Twelve sixty-one.
Yeah, twelve sixty-one.
Which is not, I think we voted for three years ago, but.
We got two.
Jan, it says January twenty-two.
So that average fourteen thousand miles per year, was that based on his travel back and forth to home with that car? As well as the job?
Was he driving it from when we got it? Okay.
And that's been, I don't know exactly what day he took those miles down, but it's been just a little bit over a year. From January eighteenth last year, March of this year, or February of this year.
It's funny that twelve seventy has, uh, less miles, less hours than twelve sixty, which is three years older.
Twelve seventy was the one that Derek was using, and it was really only going back and forth from here to this house.
Whereas twelve sixty was getting used by all the underdogs.
So what does twelve sixty do for me now?
Twenty twenty-six, I believe we said yesterday. That's that, why twenty twenty-six or now, we're sure twenty twenty?
Because like fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So is what you would ask me.
I, I missed.
And one, I think the other thing that, uh, the other reason he mentioned to me, and I think it's probably in his notes. Is that his, his goal would be to even out usage on the cars.
Yeah.
So that, um. Twenty sixty would last a little longer and had got less wear and tear because the, he would be splitting usage more evenly between twenty sixty and twenty seventy.
Uh, he makes a point about having a free car fleet, but the flexibility to send officers to school. How does our.
To school for?
Having.
Oh, to school, right.
Why would our officers go to school at our cruiser? I don't get it, that was just like the.
I think in part, that's definitely for driving training. Like, I know that Samantha is going to the, you know, they got special driver training that they have, they use up the vehicle for. Um, and Samantha's due to go to the bridge academy. So, bring, I'm sorry, it's my daughter's name, that's why I subbed it.
Makes it sound like he would send these people to school in one of our cars. Why?
Either that, or you pay them mileage for using their own car.
But I don't think, I think he said they need a fleet vehicle to do the.
They do need it to do the driver train, but he would also send them when they, because a lot of the classes are on the other side of the state.
Why would we wanna send a Monterey cruiser out of our own town? If, if we still have police here trying to do coverage. Also, their cruisers don't park a lot in Boston. That makes no sense to me at all.
The flexibility of having an additional car rather than paying someone sixty-five cents a mile.
It's up to sixty-five a mile now? Well, you know, we're paying sixty-five a mile anyway to get that car out there. Fuel, everything else. I, I think that's, that's a misuse of, of municipal equipment, personally.
I mean, Jim does the same thing when he has to send, they take one of the town trucks.
To where?
Where the classes, I know we've had classes in Marlboro, Mass. If they go to like an event.
So here we have like an AT three fifty that gets eleven miles to the gallon, we're sending it out to Marlboro hypothetically. Versus somebody who has some, on the CRV that gets twenty-six miles, that will pay him sixty-five cents a mile.
Why you get thirty cents?
I would do the math on that immediately, realize our car. I would do the math on that immediately, realize our cars should stay in our town. Personally, that's the way I feel about it. I mean, I don't like the idea of seeing our cars leave our town.
No, I, I see your point. Um, for the, for the driver training, I definitely think.
Well, if they wanna, if they wanna learn on our cruiser, which is what they're gonna drive, absolutely.
Right, but I, I agree with you for the other.
You know, I mean, I go to class once a year for three days. Drive the most economical vehicle I can up to the class.
I drive my most economical vehicle when I drive to Boston, figure my bit too.
Rather than.
The least economical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because when that truck leaves this town, we fill it up with gas. We drive out to say Marlboro. Drive back, and probably fill up somewhere along the way, and come back, and then fill up again, so it's fill up, fill up. And then we don't pay sixty-five cents a mile.
It's, it's.
Wear and tear.
It's wear and tear plus.
Yeah.
The ridiculousness of the vehicle mileage, because we are probably the private vehicles are getting better mileage, yeah, but.
I, I.
We're not on the hybrid.
Create that, you want, you guys are all excited about making policies, have to be a policy that I would try to.
I said, we don't need one for the private roads. I got rid of that.
No, that's fine.
But you want bad.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, personally, I think that there's a policy to be made, it would be keep our cars in our town with the exception of the chief and the use of his cruiser. And the, possibly the fire chief and the use of that, but if he's going to a meeting and it's steel, you take your own car. Keep track of the mileage and you put in your voucher like Don does, like I used to, like you do, like you do whenever you go to one of these meetings. We don't take the cruiser to go to a slide board meeting out in Wilbraham, right? Just because it's a town car.
I probably would've just driven my own car and papered, but.
Exactly, so.
Um.
So I mean, I just think that, that would.
Unless it's, unless it's necessary for the nature of the training to have that vehicle.
A hundred percent. Yeah, because you don't wanna train on an old Toyota Hilux if you don't be driving a Ford at one fifty, you don't, or you don't train.
Well, also, i- i- if, also there might not be a vehicle available for you to train on.
Yeah, if there's a vehicle sitting in Monterey and we need it. Then what do you do?
I know.
You know, are you gonna be in your own car patrolling?
Probably no. So, in the end, are we thumbs upping the cop car or not? Is it on the budget or is it not?
My feeling is that it's better this year than next year.
That's my feeling as well.
Uh. We can put it on the warrant, we can put it into the warrant or.
Right.
It comes to be the vote. So, go ahead.
I just can say, like, I'm, I'd rather this year than next year, and I think, uh. If it's gonna happen, you know, might as well do it certain later. Um, I do kinda wanna see where, where we are with, where we are with free cash. Um, because I prefer that.
So if you see, if you look at the one I just sent you.
Oh.
Putting radios and the police cruiser back in. Taking that money out to lower the tax levy, which is ninety-six thousand.
After that has been paid for?
Right, but don't forget the top of it, but. Highland truck is not hitting there anymore. And I took off the fifty thousand to stabilization. I'm renaming that the three one B one.
I got, I got.
And I'm gonna send you.
Yeah. Well, what I asked, uh, yesterday or last week, yesterday? Was just to see how much free cash is left after we spent on special articles, not to say we wouldn't put money in stabilization. But just to.
It's not hypothetical without it.
Just hypothetical, and then see if we have money to put into stabilization. But it got confusing when we were spending stabilization on the, on the cruiser, and then putting free cash into stabilization, and then putting free cash against the tax levy. It got really confusing, at least to me, I'm a simple person.
Right now, that's why you just sent me, oh, did it still go to the same ones?
So if we.
It's still okay with the same one.
Let me rename it and send it to you.
If we used free cash on.
So where are you, are we on the police line?
No, special articles on fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget tariff.
Did yours come across, right, Justin?
What is, right, I don't think so.
Okay, let me rename it.
Special articles?
No, we have got the wrong thing, we, we gotta get the right thing.
As the person who accidentally sent two emails without attachments today, I am not going to say a word.
I'm guessing it's because I had it over at the same time.
But you're saying we'll have a little bit less than a hundred thousand left?
After what?
After paying for all of the special articles out of free cash.
Because right now we have three seventy-seven, two oh nine in requests for special articles. Is that the correct number on the reading?
Damn, sorry, I grabbed the.
One other, one other item is, well, I mean, the one item we're not paying for out of free cash is the fire, uh, medical brush vehicle.
Right.
Those are raised appropriate.
Loan, that's how they're in there now.
That's a loan, that's something that we gotta.
Yeah.
So we have a hundred left, not with zero, when we haven't yet put anything in stabilization. And that, but that does include the cruisers and the radio for the cruiser, and just clarifying.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, but it also sounds like not using any free cash.
Okay, no.
Or not putting anything in stabilization.
There we go.
Yay.
Okay.
So nothing in stabilization. Police cruiser, police radios adjusted, what else got tweaked?
Took the money.
Lower tax rate out. Anything else?
And stabilization.
Zero rate at the moment. And that leaves us.
This one still shows that it's fifty and five.
Six K.
Do the one, open the email that says three times a charm.
You're seven thousand, this thing's gonna go under the counter. Tell you, I don't know what it is. It's not even there.
Re- reload. Hit the little reload arrow that looks at every email.
There it is.
Not there?
Correct.
Alright, so where are we at again? Still back to.
So.
Special.
You forget what else?
Yeah, there was something I thought of that like creates morning.
And does, uh, what's the status of a part-time? Not holiday, but also, but yeah, that's sick.
Oh, so the libraries need to be amended again, right, so marketing's that holiday. You wanna be there?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Three thousand still shows fifty as stabilization.
It does? No, it doesn't.
Um. My.
So.
I was.
Wasn't Derek saying earlier this week about. The additional monies for HR because of the additional hours?
Yeah.
Where would that be?
Special articles.
This. Yeah, that's put, I guess, at some point we're gonna have to make it a permanent.
Yeah, I am, it may already be.
Would that be on this channel?
Zero. Probably.
I think you probably believe it.
It should probably be in your school letter, you know, this is the, uh. Special articles showed it as fifty.
Yeah, that tab is just for me.
The other, the additional monies.
I think I named it just for me.
Well, it does say that.
Did you? Or when you open it up, it says. The issues just. Additional hours for the HR director that we have been.
Oh, right, that, yes.
Where is that supposed to be? Four thousand?
Right, let me make sure you guys are still okay with that.
Right.
What is that about?
That's assuming that we're gonna continue with Sophia writing the annual, editing the manual.
So that's for the additional two hours a week?
For the additional two hours, we'll need about four thousand dollars.
For the year.
For the year.
And then gives her an eight-hour shift in Monterey, one day a week.
The natural course, right?
Yeah.
And then the following year we'll be responsible for probably somewhere around twenty thousand.
Because somebody else is dropping off?
Yeah, Sheffield's dropping off.
Completely.
So what are they gonna do? Hire their own?
Do that? I think their town administrator prefers to handle it.
Who assigns the codes?
The county?
Yeah, county, yeah.
The only thing, oh, I see.
What, what?
Can I just ask?
No, I can't, I can't in the meeting figure all this stuff out in the meeting.
I'm gonna add four thousand. I did contend with. Sorry, Derek, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, on the general government, uh, F twenty-four. And it says.
We, we, we wrote them a letter, and we haven't heard back.
I'm sorry, Phil, no?
No oil?
We wrote, like our fieldwork group letter to try and get some better data.
I did call him, and he said he would be, they would be spending it in the spring, but.
Oh, no, I'm sure about that.
Yeah.
But I want, we asked for a recommendation the next year, and we never got one.
Okay.
Right? We went, we wore the letter down. And we actually asked to have it, uh, by February first, and it was a short month, but it was a whole month ago.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it, it just seems like it's a constant fifty, 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 fifty.
Well, it was spent thirty.
It had been lower.
Had been thirty.
See, go fifty.
Fifty.
But I never get the feeling that we're gaining on it.
I don't really, I think it's one of those things that may, I don't know that we'll ever gain on it, I don't think it's possible to get rid of that stuff.
So every year, I'll be called, right?
There is one way that we are effective in what we're doing, which is herbicides. Like.
But no one wants to do it, no.
No, uh, you know, or fill a bit.
And I'm not sure, I mean, herbicides lasted down for a few years, but I think it permanently gets rid of it.
No, it just, it just, and it's still costly, but it's a little bit from studies they did last year, there's one recommended for proselyte. And well, every time it gets brought up at town meeting, there was one, the moratorium on it last year that passed the man, it's like, people don't want herbicides. Right, so we're not going to rather have.
But I, I recall. Twenty fifty, discussing the purchase of a harvester. The tire was about seven hundred thousand.
God.
For that machine.
Right.
But we don't, and it would be in the lake, and it would work its job. And looking back, we had that paid for by now.
Do you wanna do it, a Lake Garfield tax district?
No, because that makes them even more special than they think they are.
Well, it's just, there's people in the Lake Buell tax district that pay their money, and then they pay the fifty thousand for Lake Garfield.
Do they have a harvester at Buell?
Yes. Both state programs.
It's a big thing.
I don't know who the guy is that operates it. But he's paid through the.
Prudential district.
The prudential district, which taxes secondary, I mean, all, all the people around there. West Road, all those paper roads up through there, they all pay an additional tax on top of this. So, you know, we, we pay a lot of attention to that lake. Little to none to that lake.
Because they're doing it themselves.
Right. So, the introduction of, of a district tax?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that you like?
Yeah, I mean, I think, if, if for no other reason, I mean, there's no perfect way to tax people, it always comes back to. People who are opposed to districts say, well, anyone can use it because there's a public beach, and people who are for the district say, yes, but the people who live on the lake, it matters more to.
Well, I think it does matter more that the condition of the lake to people that live on the lake, I mean, that would just be natural.
Also, we're gonna put out there that the people on the lake have a greater immediate impact on the condition of it. Because how they maintain or don't maintain their properties and what they do on those properties significantly affects.
Absolutely.
The condition of the lake, it's not the only thing that affects the lake, but it has a major impact.
It's the majority of it.
Yeah.
I think the thing that tips me in favor of the Lake Garfield tax district is just the fact that people who are paying Buell taxes are, are paying more, and that doesn't seem fair.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't at all. Uh. I just remember that it was a real concern of the quasi privatization. You know, people start to think that this really is my, like, I'm being taxed for it, I should be able to say what I want. You know, they already want a beach monitor. So yeah, it's just blows my mind, so what's next? I mean, what is that beach monitor, not that it's, I've heard you'll argue this, but what in the world is that person gonna do?
Do you remember, I've heard that it was done before? That someone checked that monitor residential parking. Bob got it?
No, I never believed Bob walked around and checked that.
That's what I've heard.
I, I never heard that. Um, I don't recall ever having a beach monitor, I don't think, I think we tried to have passes. And then we realized that it, it's not viable.
So they, according to what they said last night, when the parks commission was here. My understanding of what they said was that they had a number of conversations about this topic with Donna. And that their understanding is that we can in fact allow only town resident parking in the parking. How do you put it? By the R B D, by that park. And that the state owns that triangle of land? Overflow parking?
Which I don't think, the state actually owns that, the town does, but this, there's an agreement with the state about the boat ramp.
Right.
It's like really convoluted, the whole situation, but it turns out we probably can limit parking in, in front of the urban, right? To just town residents.
And so their plan would be to, uh, if you have a transfer station sticker or a card. Beach pass, I'll call it, that's not what they call it, but I need a name for it. Um, that would, and that would be available here, so if you had a B, an Airbnb, and you had people coming through, they could have that on their window. That you would be, you know, the beach monitor would be responsible for checking to see if the people parking there are actually residents. For calling the cops, for them to come by and picket people who didn't move their car, if they weren't a resident. To have people with boats that wanted to access the boat ramp, parking their cars over in the. Overflow parking area, right?
The boat ramp parking area.
The boat ramp parking area, exactly. Um, to put up signage, basically saying that the beach is primarily for re, the use of residents, and that there's no parking for non-residents.
Can't do it. They say the beach is just for residents.
But the park, we can, supposedly.
But you can say the parking is just for residents.
Sure, okay, so hypothetically, a bus from Great Barrington comes in with sixty kids, drops off all the kids. And then parks over by the area at the bottom of the hill.
I don't think there's anything we can do about those, right? But.
So.
That's not happening, so much is a bunch of people from B and Bs or various hotels being told that, oh, Monterey has great beach, go there.
Yeah.
And then they're showing up in vehicles and using all the garbage spaces so our own residents can.
So how do you deal with it?
Well, every other hell is doing it.
The good news is it's not our problem, it's the purse mission, so.
Right.
That's my opinion.
And I, I think the beach monitor is gonna have a pretty hard go, because I think the people are not kind of, and they also talked about the monitor cleaning up the excess garbage. Who currently picks up the garbage?
Those parks. Well, we gave the big belly to compact their feedback.
Highway gets it from the actual bins, I don't.
Right.
Pick up the trash.
Right. Well, right, okay. Um.
What is the plaque up there, the stone?
It was always on that brick.
The like.
The bricks.
Fire placey thing?
Uh-huh.
And then that thing was kind of falling apart, so it's in the stone. It says that the, the, that piece of property was purchased by the summer residents of the town of Monterey back in like nineteen eleven or something, from the Husatonic Water Company. I think that's what it says.
Why did Husatonic Water Company own?
They owned it because they, that was where the dam was, and they controlled the flow of the river for their mills. So if the river was running dry, they'd like lower the lake and then get more water for their water mills.
Wow, okay.
And then, supposedly the summer residents of the, of the town bought it so that it would be a beach. I think that's what it says, but I could be wrong. Something like that.
Yeah. That's. Worst I've ever heard of that story.
Linda Thorpe wrote about some of the history of Lake Garfield.
I have to get that novel.
I know, right?
I think.
I guess I missed one.
No, there were like three, I think, because it was originally a smaller lake and then they raised it up and. The small part of the lake wasn't even really a lake when it was low as a river, it was a stream.
And everybody that owns along the perimeter of it owns underwater out to that stream face. Believe it, on the boat ramp, we need to fight long tedious years trying to figure out what's going on there, who gave us the property, where the property is, where his deeds. Or property line, where's the town's property line, and it does get a little mixed up. But uh, I got a pretty good handle on where things really lie, I got the old maps that I created from the town maps. That seemed to have disappeared shortly after. Shortly after the dam, the sluice was created. Which was back in seventy one, I think.
When were you on that thing? Whenever.
Back in my tenure of.
Back when you guys were thinking about moving the boat.
Boat ramp across, then down off of, uh, what's the name of the rock up?
Elton Rock?
Nope, back up the top of the hill, Lime Rock, we're gonna go in Lime Rock and straight down, there's a piece of land there that I think the town had that was accessible. Piece down behind Thor, uh, Thorns was another place we looked at, so.
But it just wasn't a thing.
I never heard that Helen Shaw and her family donated that land that the beach is currently sitting on to the town. And then it ran all the way over to what was considered to be the drain. Now, there's two drains, there's one drain that's very small, and if you look at the hollowed out bowl as you go up the hill.
Yeah.
There's a drain down in there, an old culvert that pull the water out, that's right in front of Dean's old boat.
Right.
That's where his property lines is.
Right, okay.
Somehow when the tax, when things changed. All of a sudden the drain became this new line and there was a fence put up. And I believe that, I don't know who claims that property now, whether it's still in Alman's name or it's the town's name. But I've seen it change dramatically over the years, so it used to be a dock up there, wooden dock. With wooden bent bleachers that went right down into the water, right across where the three tubes were just actually. To Dean Amidon's side of those three tubes.
Wow.
And that's where you can get splinters and then you jump in the lake and soak them out. And that's where the, that's where swimming lessons were back in the sixties. And I'm pretty certain that that area, once it got changed, you know, there's still the old gardeners. That were still in place from the sixties.
Where the different roads was, yeah, yeah.
And so you can see where the old property lines were and where they might be now, so I was just curious as to how that. Why the fence continually seems to grow, approach towards the lakes, towards the swimming hall. It's like, who's putting that fence up and why?
I don't think it's the town.
Yeah. The only fence that the, the town put up was the fence to protect the swimmers from the boaters.
Yeah, so the beach, beach has its, has a sort of history.
So are, are we putting the thirty six hundred for the beach monitor on the budget and letting the town come up with them to stand it? Or we, what do you wanna do with that?
I'm opposed to a beach monitor, but um, I can stand up and say my thoughts at town hall and still put it on the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the parks commission, they're trying to do their job.
Yep.
Yep.
And uh.
They're hearing people complain, it, it's their diligence to at least address it, as best as they see fit. I just don't think they are quite ready for. The backlash that they could get.
I don't think they should do stickers though, I think that the person should just ask people as they come in, are you a monitor resident?
And if they lie to you and say yes?
What do you do?
I, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna do if they say no, and the guys just get out of the way, going to the beach.
They're, they're gonna call, I think, I think the fact that matters, most people. Wouldn't like to have to say that they're not from Monterey and get into that, and some people would lie and, but that is what it is.
I mean, I suspect there will be, like, I can't speak for you, but if I went somewhere and tried to park and somebody said, this is parking for residents only, I would move my car.
So what?
Well, I would either move it on now, yeah, I would move it onto the road, I would move it over to the Bowie Park.
It's only in the park, I'm a, I'm a highway.
And then the, and then the police will come and get it.
If you're tires on the tire.
Or I would go somewhere where there was a parking.
I just think that we're creating a problem, there's limited parking there regardless of who is there. And the beach can only hold so many people directly.
But I guess the question is, if the beach can only hold so many people, should the beach, the people who actually live in Monterey. Pay taxes in Monterey and, and live here have first right of access to the beach, I feel like, yes, they should.
I'd say that, yeah, I kinda like that idea, but I also have to say that if you're a resident of the state of Massachusetts, you have that same right. Because it is a great park.
But so is the Stockbridge Bowl, and Stockbridge has parking for residents?
And parking for that.
Right, but not in the same place.
Maybe not, but we don't offer them parking anywhere else.
We don't have parking anywhere else.
So.
Or the facility to do it.
I see a letter I put it on and watch them A M.
That should entertain.
Kind of.
Okay. Can we, are we comfortable being done with the budget discussion for today?
Was there anything else that we felt, so are we gonna come back to talk about stabilization?
Yes, but I wanna look uh, at this, not.
Well, then let me, let me send you an over.
Yeah, no.
I, 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 I think we're, we're getting close to the point where it's gonna work.
Cause I gotta add the holiday and I gotta do other things.
I would, yeah, I would hope that there is.
Yes.
Some. Some agreement that we do wanna put, there's one with fifty in, and more if we can.
That, that's how I. Yes.
We put fifty in the stabilization. We couldn't possibly put a hundred towards a note, you know, fifty towards one note, fifty towards another. Which is a lot, like fifty in stabilization to me.
I don't disagree with you and I could see an argument made for that, but the only.
Gets us those form reports, I think that may help.
Help that. The only counterpoint would be if we're worried about a bunch of stuff coming next year. That that's what we have to wait for, yes, and you know, Frank seems confident there's gonna be all these changes to the capital plan, but I don't feel it's proved. That's like counting chickens before the hatch, right, like, if we, if, if in the intervening year they go over the capital plan and find a lot of changes that. We all agree we can make, then we can make a different plan, but at the moment, I think we shouldn't assume that that will happen.
I think all we're gonna find is that more stuff is gonna happen.
Yeah.
Once you finish the feasibility study of the town, also, they're gonna have a ton of stuff here, we're missing all of the, you know, like. Maintenance that's going to be needed, I know it's not right away, but on the library building and on the community center building and. You know, we don't have the roof and the painting and all that stuff on for, for those buildings.
And some things are might, might move down because of the timing on the culvert may change and the timing on this culvert may change. So those things, but where they end up may change too, so.
I get one, one last word on the budget that you just.
Yeah.
Rule, the feasibility study, that amount was.
Forty nine thousand.
Yeah, and that came up from where?
It was proposed by E D M, the people that did the study at the schools back when you were on the board.
Fifty thousand to tell somebody what we go to need.
To, to tell us what we need with the, you know, the first maintenance, this and that, um.
Does, and it does include, include a plan, I believe includes drawings, um, that are schematic and really.
Yeah.
And how we can maximize the space as well as add on if.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel better about it, at least provides a plan, even if it's, I guess it's schematic needs, it's not actually building plans.
Right.
Yeah.
You know.
They're gonna go talk to everybody to see what everybody's need and what our issues are with the building, I mean, I kind of done that, but there's.
Is that elevator capable of going up if we wanted to add on to it?
I'm not sure, but the next time the elevator people are here, I'll ask.
That would just be a question that maybe they could answer for us, just be redoing that cable and the mechanism to go to a second floor.
Yeah.
Cheaper to go up that out, yeah, I'm waiting. Can you remind me next week to discuss the community center and its operational budget? Yeah, okay.
Well, I, I want your decision on whether you're gonna proceed with it and if you are going to proceed it, I would like, I would ask you guys about, about. Small committee of like me, Jim, I'll be a select one member, I'll be finance commander, working on how we're going to move forward.
With what?
If, if you decide to.
Operating budget, I think you're talking about the, so I want the familiar on that.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the yearly operating budget for it, how it became.
How it became.
A budget line. Cause originally when we were going through, it, it was self sust- self sustaining, no money was gonna come from the town taxpayers to operate that.
So it's never been self sustained?
Cause we supplement.
It's being paid by the Valley Alley rents, Valley Alley we get.
But the budget's already over fourteen, it's forty dollar.
But it, it pretty much, uh, well, I guess it was.
So we get twelve thousand six hundred for rent and eleven thousand and twenty nine dollars, I believe is the figure. That's allowed to be used for the community center and fifteen hundred for Valley Alley, but as.
For maintenance.
For maintenance, which really right now only covers the seventy seven dollar a month that we get for the, um, chairman next to go there. And the water bill and then something small, but if you saw my email from Jim when he went over there and actually did a.
Yes.
Inspection, there is at least ten thousand dollars worth of work that needs to be done immediately. So in order to do that, the community center needs to become its own line item, not to mention that with the tent they have in there. It pushes them over the eleven thousand twenty nine that they would have been allowed to spend, so right now I think they're.
So, but, I, I mean, I, I know that you wanna get going with other business, so.
I mean, I'm not in a rush.
No, but that's, I, I don't mind not talking about it at this point, it's really just more conversation to try to figure out. How it became what it came, when originally it was designed, to be no word about the taxpayer.
Well, as of our most recent budget, it was still in the revolving, in the, not revolving.
Yeah, it was just as a negative.
I had it added into the budget.
Right, so.
But as of our last year's budget, wasn't it still not aligned in the budget?
The one that we're currently in right now, yes, it's the revolving.
So if we were to, if we were to put it as line in the budget, this would be the first time.
But I think there's good, I, personally, I think it makes sense to have it be a separate line item, that, that's my personal estimation, number one. Because I think that there aren't, there is maintenance on Valley Alley and number two, because like, I understand. Why it was originally done that way and I understand it wasn't supposed to be a burden to the taxpayers, but. I also think that a community center serves the community and the Valley Alley rent needs to make sure that Valley Alley doesn't. It needs to be maintained, right, so, you, you know.
Well, the way that it was presented, that, I'll stop, because I'm very hungry, brief.
I know, I don't worry for you.
Was that the uh, community center was filled with grandeur as to all the funding and wonderful things. They were gonna do and be able to charge for it, they came up with dollar figures. And I see now that that has fallen off the wayside dramatically, that there is just no really revenues being generated. From the community center, that it's a negative drain on the taxpayers.
I don't, I guess I don't have the same memory of it being a, a revenue generator.
It was supposed to generate whatever revenues it would take to run.
I thought the plan was always that it was on the revolving fund, but I may misremember that.
Right.
I wasn't around.
Right, very possible, so, yeah, that's enough for that, for that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss other budget items, uh, I'd actually.
Just to clarify, I'm not against the community center at all. If all of a sudden there's fourteen thousand dollar new line item, somebody will put a hold on it.
Yeah, for sure, better to be prepared.
Yeah.
I'm a girl scout, maybe that's a boy scout, I'm not really sure.
Okay, um, transfer station attendant appointment, uh, this is like an indefinite appointment, I imagine, but.
We actually have someone, we have one and we have two more possible interviews. This, this one does seem promising.
Where did they, just because this is a constant recruitment issue.
Where do they come from? Where do they come from?
Oh, from, you weren't answering me, that was okay, sorry. I thought she was saying. Right, right, no, 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 okay, um, all right, that, okay.
So it's an abortion.
Exactly.
Be prepared to start this Saturday and.
And would you be working all three days? Anything else you wanna tell us about?
It seems very friendly and uh, he has worked a couple outdoor jobs around here, so he's prepared for the elements and. Understands the, um, the clientele and that they would like help with their garbage.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint Garrett Kirk as transfer station attendant.
Say.
Is there any other discussion on that?
Not on the motion though.
Okay, well, call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous, yes, vote.
I do have a hard time having our transfer station attendants feel that they are responsible for unloading people's trash. I don't like that one bit, I think it's uh, rude of people to come up and expect these people to unload their cars to them.
What is the deal, is it in the job description or not?
No. I don't believe it was.
I mean, it's one thing to, like, it's one thing to expect, it's another thing to operate with someone who clearly is having trouble.
And they do that very well, but they, they, I mean, I've talked to these guys and they say, you wouldn't believe, these people come up and they just expect us to. Reach in and do this and then if we're not like right on, they like, I said, I wouldn't even respond. So I, I, I think policy number two, I would. Is that we make certain that the people in Monterey threw a nice letter to the town newspaper.
You are responsible for your own.
Yeah, I mean, if you need help because of physical challenges.
Right.
Awesome, we'd be more than happy to help you, but if you're just coming up and expecting somebody to handle your garbage.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there should be an expectation that, that you're responsible for unloading your own.
Yeah, there's who helped you put it in your car. It's not, cause that was also something that I was part of when they, when that was all initiated. Never had that before, used to have the old hole in the ground.
Well, he didn't seem to have a problem with it, we just made it sound like, you know, there are people that appreciate the assistance.
And, and they all understand that, that it's not in their job description, but they don't feel comfortable telling somebody that when they're being.
Taken advantage of.
Bitch that, that why aren't you doing your job? So, I am doing it.
Yep.
Too many carrots.
Too many people just not willing to carry their own weight, I get it.
Five B, uh, fiscal year twenty four health insurance renewal rate sheet acceptance.
It is what it is, but it's not bad, um, the health insurance, health insurance went up one point oh five percent. And the dental, which you guys don't pay for, that like hits a hundred percent, went down.
Wow.
Point three percent.
How did that happen?
Not that it's not great, but it's for you.
Did they change the coverage?
No, our employees are really good about not using it.
Now, this was a hundred percent charts when I got here and it just died.
How old is it?
Uh, I think it slightly reached its age.
Yeah, well, maybe yours, maybe the meetings been on, went to.
Two hours?
It should last, the battery should last more than two hours.
Well, my charging port on my phone doesn't work, it can only wireless charge.
I, I will tell you, mine, mine was not a hundred percent when I came and it's at seventy nine now. Right, no, I'm just confirming that his battery should last longer.
We should accept the, uh.
Insurance?
Health, what's this called, health insurance renewal rate sheet.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
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 It's unanimous approval.
So that is.
I think it's just you, right?
And resident on my right.
As per.
Even with the.
So that's just the flat rate per, per insurance cut policy?
Yes.
Multiplied by how many people?
Nine.
And the possibility of carrying another one.
And then it's only seventy five percent of the town.
Um, next I have a business thirty nineteen amendment request.
Yeah, and I apologize if this ended through today, but.
Um. So this all comes back to the, the, the Hoover drainage project that is just being updated to include two more deep some catch bases.
Which we've already been discussing a couple of weeks ago, right? And, but this came from the meeting that Justin actually attended last week, right?
Yes.
And we talked with the person that runs the firm.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it's not, we're not changing our, our request. My understanding was this is just, they wanted more detail in order to approve it, cause this is the D E P. And they uh, they're willing to work with the town to get the town a better work product. They just need the paperwork to back it up.
Oh.
And the matches on this thing are very confusing.
So confused.
Well, I don't think that the, but the, but no, the town doesn't need to raise any funds just for this. It's all gonna be done through any kind of work.
Okay.
And like what we spent on mill foil, so that's a good thing.
We should get a two for.
Yeah. Motion to approve the letter to the D E P regarding Hoover drainage project.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on that? There being on the call vote?
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous. Yes, vote. And we need to assign the letter and it's.
The other amendment? The, uh, the other amendment is for the M V P.
Uh, uh, okay, she.
Sorry. Do you want me to sign?
Hey, you can sign on.
We're not going to do the police mutual.
No, he was mistaken. It was actually a true force, both task force agreement.
Do we have to assign the M V P one to them?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
We could make a second.
Yes, oh yeah, I mean, it's a different, it's a different, it's an entirely, yes.
I just, I didn't see it.
So this is just amended because of your approval to use the monies um garden over there.
Right.
Okay, right, 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 gotcha.
She just amended this.
Yeah, so this is for the, it's entirely different thing for the M V P grant for the co- Route twenty three culvert in Center Town here. And.
Using the re.
Storm damage.
The, the storm damage repair on the banks as, what is it?
As what?
Match.
As match for that V P, right, okay.
But this is.
This buys the plants and everything. So she's, she just had to change the M L, so we're paying them, cause they're buying the plants and we're gonna pay them.
Gotcha, okay.
Motion to approve the second amendment between the, between V R P C and the town Monterey regarding the M V P action grant.
Second.
There any other discussion on that? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And that's unanimous approval.
Do you just want one, two, three?
Yeah.
Melissa, my belated birthday.
Thank you.
I had it on my desk, recalling your last.
They told me I was at a meeting on me.
In that space, you were here.
Remember that?
That's a fun part.
Isn't it? It's great. Couldn't think of any way I'd rather spend like just like that one night.
Yeah.
Oh, that's too bad, I'm sorry.
It's only happened twice in my time here.
Um. Uh, Peter Merkett wants someone to be on the steering committee for the solar, solar consulting project.
Do you wanna do it?
I am happy to do it.
I nominate.
Do you, uh, but do you want, I mean, unless.
Do you want, I, well, I, do you see a downside on that?
No.
I don't see that, but.
I just.
Yeah, that's good, but what's the requirement?
What's what requirement?
I mean, what's the steering committee gotta do?
Meet with the consultants, the consultant and beacon integrated and steer them.
Basically keep everything on track and the decision-making process and evaluation process and make sure that guys are done and the people are thoughts and then good decisions can they.
So more of a clerical position.
I'd say more of a supervisor you want.
On site?
No. I don't think that's typically, right, I don't think it's typically a, a, on site.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really know fully the details.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm just.
But, but what, what, what I did see is that Beacon was saying that it would hopefully involve a slide court member or, or the like. Since if ever a project, a solar project was approved or to go to town meeting, the slide court would put it on the warrant.
So we'd have at least one member that was fully cognizant of, of what was going on with it as it arose.
Yeah, I mean, I highly doubt, at one point, we were talking about annual town meeting this year. I think that's not gonna happen. But maybe next year.
I mean, I think it's gonna take a while for the, for, maybe they work a lot faster than I thought, but.
Well, they, no, I mean, initially they agreed to an April first deadline, but then they went, uh, the renewable energy working group went out and got more bids and that added a few weeks ceremony.
Right.
And here we are. I had told Peter that I was a little bit hesitant due to it was at five P M tonight and I have something at six P M, but he said the steering committee will make their own meeting times.
Had the train go last night, but it was.
It was canceled.
Oh?
Yeah.
Why?
I think because a lot of the people who would have been involved are, I don't really know.
Okay.
But I think it's because a lot of people who would have been involved were, are Department of Public Works. And, but they were busy all last night and that day, so that's why I think, but I showed, I showed up and that's when I found out that it was canceled, so.
Love you.
Um. The minutes. Do we have any other unanticipated business that we'll share on the minutes?
I only have the one second, so if you didn't.
This is just two twenty one.
The joint minute, joint meeting, I think.
Well, so was it the?
Oh, you weren't at that one.
No, it wasn't. Michelle saw it for me.
She wasn't.
How long ago?
Not seventeen years ago.
That's a long time.
Oh.
She hired you?
I heard John.
So I, some of my, why? That's so weird.
Why, what?
Well, like, look, that's on there. Oh, so I, right, so I had, so I corrected all this stuff, if it was.
If it's obvious.
Right, if it was obvious, I corrected them. Okay, gotcha.
Like be going.
Gotcha, okay. I see. No, sorry, that's okay. Did you have any edits to it, Justin? Okay, this only has mine cause it's actually on the side, so I don't know which. Probably, which is. That's okay. Justin's on.
Can, can we just deal with the tree warden paragraph? It seems like that's the only real hang up, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, right, right, right.
Tree warden expenses on page three.
It's okay, I can do it.
I think we just need to go with one or the other.
Which power down, tree warden, okay. The previous tree warden that had a plan, is that what you?
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it says the same thing. We just can't go upside down.
Right, I know. Wait, why nine thousand? I thought it was.
No, forty nine thousand.
Forty nine hundred.
No, forty nine thousand is the budget. It's increasing six thousand to forty nine thousand. Got it.
So the way I had it, so it might make sense to go up six thousand this year.
Right.
To forty nine thousand since there was no increase the previous year. I mean, really, we're kinda just, it's arbitrary.
Saying the same thing.
They need money to cut down trees.
I don't, I don't care which one you want, which one you want.
Yeah.
Arbitrary.
Let's go with Justin's. That's not Justin's.
Uh, yeah. Um.
Which one was yours? The lower one?
And his are the actual. The one is, yeah, the changes in the paragraph, mine were on the side because trying to not have it too confusing.
I got you. Suku for forty five.
What number is this? I can't.
It's four sixteen eight seventeen.
Okay, point oh three, all right.
Yeah. That is how much free cash we have available for us.
Before our other stuff, yeah, I guess.
Before anything, that's just how much.
Right, exactly.
Since our last town meeting, since the last special.
Cause we got certified a little bit over five hundred. Maybe a bit over five hundred, then we spent it at, in the fall and again in, in the spring, or winter.
So where are we at, again?
Four sixteen eight seventeen.
Four one six.
Mm-hmm. That's what we have to work with through town meeting.
We're wanting to try to keep a hundred in there. So, the goal was something like that, not what I gathered today.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna have right now if we pay for everything other than the fire truck out of free cash, but the, that's with putting nothing in stabilization. It's also with taking nothing out of stabilization. Stabilization stays the same. Which would be at six.
Six change.
Six oh seven.
So are you guys wanting to consider putting the truck back on for the highway department or?
Be paid for them. Raise appropriate.
The only raise appropriate stabilization, we have options.
So, I don't like, I'm not necessarily trying to open up the budget discussion, I have it on for next week, so. Well, let's put it back on. Let's leave it on for next weekend to finish the minutes.
Yeah.
No, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's finish the minute.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
All right, is that a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of two one twenty three joint committee amended.
Oh, second. Call a vote on those minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Pass two to zero, scene, Scott.
Okay.
Do the last thing.
Do the nothing.
Okay, I did not get to the two.
Yeah, we'll take up two from right here next week. And is there any unanticipated business? Other unanticipated business that M V P is that. Oh, the town council request regarding conservation. Uh, I would move to approve the town council request. From the town administrator and the town attorney regarding conservation commission funds. Second, is there any other discussion on that? Call a vote?
Yes.
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 And that's unanimous approval.
And don't forget to sign the warrant.
Yes.
All right, you got anything else? Unanticipated business?
Is there any public, unanswered questions?
How was we on the vote? I mean, that, sorry.
Motion to adjourn?
Signing.
Uh, call a vote? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at two oh eight P M, unanimous.
Oh, gee. Are we, we are going.